Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I call to order the public work session for today, October 25th. And Madam Clerk, would you call the row, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle, Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Council members, we have a Historic Preservation Commission appeal for consideration of 501 Maryland Avenue. The applicant will be given, is the applicant present? How you doing, sir? The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present their appeal. And then we'll have 10 minutes for the Historic Preservation Commission Chair. And finally, the discussion of the deliberation will take place amongst members of council. Sir, would you please come forward? Present your information, and you will have 10 minutes.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir. Could you please state your name and address just for the record so we can have everything listed?
Okay, name and address?
Yes, sir.
My name is Albert Creighton III. My address is, I actually don't live at this property.
Yes, sir.
My address is 2658 Leighton Stone Drive in Chesapeake.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So I'm here today to appeal to the decision made by the Historic Preservation Commission because I just feel as though my case wasn't given fair consideration. The reason the fence was erected was because I had a misunderstanding that the property was located inside of a historic district. I spoke with someone at the state level, and they informed me that the, excuse me, they informed me that the property was outside of that boundary. So that's why we proceeded forward to erect the fence. And upon presenting that information to the Historic Preservation Commission, they told me that the property was, in fact, inside of that historic district per the local guidelines. So what I did was I applied for a after-the-fact approval, I think that's the way it's pronounced, but that was denied. And really, the reason I erected the fence was to provide a safe place for my tenants, children, and pets to play. If you can go to the next slide, you'll see that the property is located at the corner of Maryland and Cleveland, and Cleveland is a very busy street. A lot of cars coming up and down. So also, I feel as though the fence doesn't take away from the historic feel of the neighborhood. It's a very nice fence. So I'm asking for you guys to overturn the decision made by the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for my colleagues on council for the applicant?
Yes.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Creighton.
How you doing, Mr. Moody?
Did you purchase the property from a realtor?
Yes, sir.
And they didn't mention that the house was inside of a historic district?
That's a great question. No, sir. It was not part of my closing documents at all.
So it was never mentioned?
No, sir. Not by my real estate agent, not by the closing agent, no one.
And none of the documents noted that?
No, sir. And I can provide you proof.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes. You noted in your write-up that there were other properties that had similar fencing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you have the address or any documentation?
I have a lot of addresses in that neighborhood. As you can see, it's probably harder to see, but two doors down, there's three fences in the front yard and a lot more fences throughout the neighborhood.
Can you point to which one you're speaking to?
My house is at the, probably center of the screen, at the intersection of Cleveland and Maryland Avenue. It has a gray, the roof is gray at the very end of the street. So when you come down one house, there's a white roof, second house has a white roof, and then that very third house has a gray roof with a red overhang. Those next couple houses down have fences in the front yard. And a lot more houses in the neighborhood in Port Knoll have front yard fences. And that's what I was told, that the neighborhood doesn't allow front yard fences.
How were you notified that that was a violation?
Via mail from, I guess it's one of the inspectors for the city. He came by and seen the fence and sent me a letter.
Are there any questions?
Other questions from my colleagues.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Creighton, how long has the fence been erected?
Since, I would say, since last summer.
Okay, so over a year?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
So, Mr. Creighton, what you pointed out as far as other houses having fencing, what you are bringing to council's attention is nothing new.
Okay.
Since I've been on council, there have been some inconsistencies in the enforcement. And so there have been properties that have been in and outside of the guidelines that existed. So I don't want you to think that you're bringing some novel concept to us, but that has been an occurrence over the years.
Okay.
And so it's nothing new.
Okay. And I do also want to mention that I buy multiple properties in the area, and my goal is to build up the area. You know, I bought that property in 2019. I bought another property on Mount Vernon, and I'm in the processes of rehabbing and bringing the units back up to market value. So I'm trying to build Portsmouth up, Portsmouth up the best that I can, so what I'm trying to help, at least.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir, for coming towards us today, and we have had some discrepancies in these type of deliberations. My question, did they let you know that this was a historic district violation or a Chesapeake Bay preservation violation?
I believe it was a historic district.
Okay, all right.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess it's coming to us under Chesapeake Bay Preservation Commission. I guess that's the one, the body that ruled on this for you, when it should have been the historic district. I guess a question to Mr. Deputy City Manager Baldwin, how is the violation being brought forward?
Well, this is an appeal from a decision of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Oh, the Historic Preservation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
If that's all you have, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, we'll have the Historic Preservation Commission Chair. And sir, Mr. Prince, if you could state your name and address?
Yes, sir. My name is Sean Prince. I'm the interim Chair for Historic Preservation Commission, otherwise HPC, and I thank you, distinguished council and staff. In regards to 501 Maryland Avenue, this is an after-the-fact case, which means that the construct was done without permission from zoning planning or HPC. This particular property also sits within the historic commission, excuse me, historic neighborhood, and this neighborhood, as with Old Town and Parkview, does not allow fences. In regards to the fences that are there, there's probably at least 20 fences that probably have been constructed prior to 1980, when the guidelines came into effect. So we cannot speak for any of the fences that were there. However, the fences that are there are wooden, picket, white, and/or stained, and I believe that there are six wrought iron fences within an eight-block radius. This fence does not fit the style of any of the fences that are there now, and with the guidelines that they stand, vinyl is not allowed in any of the neighborhoods that we represent, with the exception of Chulston. So either way, this particular fence doesn't fit the criteria for that neighborhood or any of the other standing historic neighborhoods.
Mr. Prince, sir, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
With that explanation about what type of fencing could go in the front of the house in this particular neighborhood, is that a part of the policy? Is that written somewhere where it states?
We have, I'm sorry.
Where it states specifically that vinyl, things that are not acceptable, vinyl and things that you mentioned, do you have that written and stated somewhere?
It is within the guidelines that are online and in a printed copy.
So it is written and stated?
Yes.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Prince, is the problem that fences aren't allowed, or is the problem that the material is the wrong material?
It's both.
So it is both?
If it was not an existing fence, then nine times out of 10, it would not have been allowed anyway. Above and beyond that, it was a vinyl fence, which is not allowed in that neighborhood.
But if Mr. Creighton had erected a wooden fence?
If it had been a matching wooden picket fence, potentially, I can't speak for what may or may not have happened, but potentially, we would have probably said something different. But vinyl is not allowed in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Mr. Prince, you mentioned that there are already 20 fences that, approximately 20 fences.
Potentially, yes, sir.
And you said they were probably constructed before 1980.
And since I've been on the board twice, we have not allowed a fence to go up that was not already constructed or reconstructed, having had been there.
Yeah, well, my question is, you said that it was probably constructed, those 20 fences were probably constructed before 1980.
Before the guidelines.
Do you have any data or information to confirm that those fences were fixed before 1980?
I do not, but I believe that if you go back through at least the last eight years, probably more.
Well, that's not.
I'm just saying, if you go back.
No, but that's not what I'm speaking to. What I'm speaking to is that there are fences that are there.
You're correct.
And we do not know if they were built prior to or after 1980.
And that's why I said probably.
That's, I know, right, exactly, and that's why, that's speculation. And so when we're talking about being fair and equitable to the community, I just find it problematic when standards are applied to certain properties, but not all the properties. And that's something that, as I said before, has been an issue that has come before this council, before the inconsistency in the enforcement. And so I just have an issue with that.
May I answer that?
Absolutely. You have the floor, sir.
It's not inconsistency from any board that comes before you. The inconsistency is Sunday quarterbacking, whereas they start Friday night after 5:00 and complete the project on Sunday. And I'm not saying that this is it. You're correct. I don't have proof that any of these fences were not done after 1980. However, a lot of things happen after midnight, which we don't have any control. Once we catch it, once it's brought to our attention, then we have to speak on it, as with this fence. But a lot of things happen, and I've reported things, including three roofs in my neighborhood that were initiated at 8:00 on Friday night and completed by 10:00 Sunday morning. That happens all the time, and that's not okay.
So how is it determined which property is identified as being in violation?
If it's within the historic district, and it's on your website.
Right, I'm saying, how is the particular property identified?
If it's within the historic district.
Okay, so if you have 20-some properties that have fences, and we don't know if it was built before 1980 or after 1980, have any of those landowners been contacted, or has there been any investigation as to?
I can't speak to anything except for what's in front of us today, and this was built.
Right, and so that's the inconsistency that I'm speaking to.
But that's not inconsistent.
Well, that's what you may say, but that's what it indicates when you can't tell me that properties that have fences on them presently in a community that's not supposed to have fences, but yet we don't know if it was before 1980 or after 1980, and it hasn't been investigated.
But that's not an inconsistency of the board, sir.
Right.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How you doing, Mr. Prince? I just want to know, what's the daily routine, monthly routine, weekly routine of the HPC for identifying potential, I guess, new owners, new projects within the community? How do you guys, I guess, collect that data, and how do you update new, I guess, homeowners in that area about potential rules with the HPC?
That's not a purview of the HPC, that's the city. You guys have the guy.
Well, for your particular neighborhood, and for that particular neighborhood, is there any routine that you guys are trying to do to give the updated rules? Because how would he know, or how would any citizen know exactly, to go to this website and look at new?
If you're homeowner, when you sign your contract, there is a statement that says you should be aware of the neighborhood that you live in, in any of your contracts.
I think he just said it.
No, I didn't say that it said historic preservation, that you should be aware of your neighborhood that you live in. None of the neighborhoods that are historic aren't identified. The only question is the boundary of the historic neighborhood. All of these neighborhoods are well-identified when you go into them. It is not the purview of the HPC to go out and look for anything. Planning goes through, or, excuse me, zoning goes through, there are individuals that go through and check, and if there's a violation, they come to us. We meet monthly. Mr. Moody is our representative, he's there consistently, and we take these up if we get them. If there's individuals in the neighborhood that see things, they will call in and report. I'm a citizen, I've done the same.
So this is just, it sounds like it's a case-by-case thing. Like you say, they just find issues and they report them here and there, whatnot, it's no certain procedure, monthly or weekly procedure, which you guys do, or any citizens do to try to collect data?
That would be up to the city to create that, and I would love if you did that.
So during his process of buying the home, like you say, there's a statement that may say you may know the, you must know the rules or whatnot that's pertaining to a historical site, but is there anything that has a specific address on it for him to find those rules?
It is online, on your website, that has the historic neighborhoods and the boundaries thereof. That would be like me saying, "I'm sorry, officer, I made that left, that sign wasn't there two months ago."
But we're talking about a, we're talking about a home purchase.
You're giving me hypotheticals, I'm just stating.
Yeah, we're just talking about a home purchase.
It would be the same as if I would make a left when that sign wasn't there three months ago. It's up to the homeowner to know the area that they live in. All I can do is go by the guidelines that the city has provided and spent good money on, and I can tell you, our guidelines are seen across the country. I've been to many, many of a conference where they've used our guidelines because they are good guidelines.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Battle, then, Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
For the record, that policy was implemented in 2008.
I believe this current one was. There was one prior, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Prince, I think we've asked this question before, the guidelines that were created in 1980, those are 42 years old now. Are there any new guidelines?
I believe that Mr. Battle had stated the new ones are, I think, 2008.
2008.
And we're in the process of reviewing the ones that we have currently.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
Right, but the guidelines are online, and you guys also have print copies that anybody that's a homeowner in a historic neighborhood can get.
Okay. Suggestion might be through the community civic leagues or something to have them to bring this to the attention, I mean, if everyone in the community.
Parkview has done that. As a president of the civic league, we've done that. It's still the purview of the homeowner that moves into these properties to know the neighborhood that they're in.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And now the floor is open for discussion with my colleagues on council. Before I open up the floor for discussion, one of the things I would like to say, Mr. Creighton, could you please come forward again? I need to ask you a question. You said that you contacted the state.
Yes, sir.
So you knew that, you were aware that you probably needed to do something, so you contacted the state.
Yes, sir.
About a fence, or the historic district.
Yes, sir.
That's what you indicated. Did you ever contact the city about, could you put up a vinyl fence? Or was that within the rules?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. When I started at the state and stopped at the state, once I found out from them that the property was outside of the boundary of historic district.
Okay, sir.
Yes, sir. Which I found out about all of that months after closing on the property.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. So do we have any additional, you may be seated. Do we have any additional discussion with my colleagues on council regarding this matter? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to vote to uphold the historic district. As I mentioned before, you know, our historic districts, if we don't maintain the standards as years go by, they're not going to be historic anymore. And it's no secret to most people, when they move into a historic district, they know where they are. I can't fathom why you would call the state and not call the city that you bought property in. But I'm going to vote to uphold the HPC to maintain the historic standards. I think that's important.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Too many times minorities and people with not a great knowledge of the law are taken advantage of in this process. These folk sell these properties, and they know the stipulations, but they don't spell them out to the folk that they be selling them to. And I think that's not fair practices in business. So I'm going to vote to extend a waiver or not compel these penalties on this individual. And as a council, maybe we need to take a look at these historical properties and implement some policies that would make it mandatory that the seller, make those persons that purchased these properties aware of the weight that comes along with buying these properties. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm going to ask my colleagues to reverse the decision of the planning, the Historic Planning Commission here because of the issue of equity, again, that when you have properties that are in violation, and then some properties are identified as being in violation and others are not, that to me, that just seems to be unfair. And I think it is incumbent upon council to make sure that it's handled in a just manner. I think there's a deeper issue council needs to discuss regarding the historic planning districts, and that is, should the city continue to be a publicly-sponsored homeowner association? Or should that be something that those neighborhoods should take more control of? And I think that's a deeper question that goes beyond today, because in essence, we're serving as a homeowner association for certain communities. And it's interesting, we use this term historic in order to identify, historic can be interpreted several ways, and so I think that's a deeper discussion. But I would ask my colleagues to reverse the decision of the planning commission and allow Mr. Creighton to continue to have the fence there.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Could I speak to Mr. Prince one more time? I just, just a simple question. As I look at the applicant's fence, I'm just trying to understand completely exactly what the HPC is looking for, because I guess when I look at, you know, an applicant putting up a vinyl fence, I'm looking at durability. I'm looking at, you know, presentation, how long a vinyl fence would last compared to a wooden fence. You know, there's a lot of wear and tear that can happen with a wooden fence more so than a vinyl fence. So I think if it fit the aesthetics of a historical look, it should be something that should be accepted. But I just want to know exactly what's the basis of not accepting a vinyl fence compared to a wooden fence.
Okay, I would refer back to the guidelines, of which the city produced. If it's not an existing fence, then the fence doesn't go up. That being said, as Councilman Whitaker has stated, there are fences that have gone up. Some of them were prior to 80, some of them were, you know, quarterback Sunday. This fence does not fit the look of any of the other fences that are in the neighborhood. They're like one-by-two-foot picket fences. This does not fit anything that's there, with the exception of a standard wrought iron fence, and again, I think there's six. Vinyl is not accepted in that neighborhood. And again, this is not a personal, I'm a vinyl person, the durability is there, but it's an historic neighborhood, and that's not an acceptable product at this particular time.
So we're going back to the look, then? So it's the look?
No. Vinyl fence is not accepted where there was no fence. There was no fence. Vinyl is not accepted per the guidelines. All of this is per the guidelines that the city put forward and paid good money for. This is not about necessarily look. The look is a part of it in that it doesn't match anything that's there. You're not going to find that fence in any of that neighborhood. They're either white picket, stained picket, and it's one by two, maybe, and/or one of the six wrought iron fences that are there. And it's not a decision that any of the board, you know, individually says, "I don't like that look." The guidelines is what we are working to preserve. Period.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I guess this is to the Preservation Commission. I do respect the decisions that you're making as a Preservation Commission, but Mr. Creighton purchased this home in 2019, and it has been three years since, you know, he's been in the property. He erected the fence over a year ago, and I guess we need, or you need, or somebody needs to change the guidelines so that there are some clear directions on how you gauge when a decision is going to be made on someone. Because if the fence been up for one year, if someone saw it coming up, they could have went and say, "Mr. Creighton, hi, I'm your neighbor," or "I'm from the Preservation Commission, and do you realize that the fence that you are starting to put up is vinyl as opposed to white picket fence?" And I think that, you know, one year is way past the timeframe where this homeowner, this developer who is changing the looks of the community, I think we need to revisit the guidelines. So I'm going to be voting to deny the Historic Preservation Commission.
May I respond?
You may respond.
The one year isn't the fence, the one year is how long it's almost taken to get to the council. It's been a while for the council to respond to this.
Then that's a problem too.
Right, so.
So I still will deny the decision?
It's the council that's got the decision. The one year is pretty much the timeframe that it's taken to get to the council. The issue is, if the individuals that are out there looking for the violations are more apt to the knowledge of what HPC is about, what the guidelines are, they would be caught sooner. That's not the HPC, that's the city. HPC is only there to adhere and go by the guidelines and enforce the guidelines that the city has put forth. If the city wants to maintain this, then we need to get the city out more often, and... and look and see if there's a notice of okay to build. If there's not a pink slip up there and you're building, it's not okay. But that's not us. We're just here to abide by the guidelines.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Prince.
Yes.
Couple of things. And, you know, this is for the homeowner as well. And listening to the discussion, a couple of things come to my mind. First of all, the guidelines are there for a purpose. Their guidelines are clear, and it is for the reasons that is stated. First, the applicant, the homeowner, did indicate that he buys properties in other areas. So he's used to purchasing properties and perhaps, he's probably used to, and you can answer the question at some point, used to understanding what the rules are before you do your rehab projects in a community. With that understanding in mind, I believe that, you know, when we look at these types of situations, we've got to follow the guidelines. And it's important because the guidelines are there for a reason. Whether or not we like the guidelines, we do have the authority council to change some of those guidelines. But in this instance, there was never an attempt, from what I heard, to contact the city regarding what those guidelines were. We all have responsibilities when we buy a property, when we come into a community to do things within the rules. So with that in mind, I'm not going to support this effort as well. And Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor. You may be seated, sir.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to say to Mr. Prince, and also to what you said, Mayor, I think when we become rigid with guidelines and when those guidelines start trumping what is right and fair, I think, then those guidelines should not be administered as written. The statement that you made, Mr. Prince, as far as there were some fences that were built prior to 1980, then there were some fences that were built, I think you said at the 8:00 PM quarterback hour.
Sunday quarterback.
Yeah, Sunday quarterback.
PM on Friday, done by 10:00 on Sunday.
But it's a third, it's a third one that I hope you take back to the board before they bring these to council, is that there were some that were built after and a wink was given and it was allowed to be done. That's the issue that we have to take into account when we're dealing with.
If it's possible, if you could reduce, if you could produce those.
Sir, sir.
I didn't speak across you.
You have the floor.
So all I'm suggesting to you, just like you have not produced what you have said as far as prior to, it's not for me to produce that. What I'm suggesting to you, so that we don't have these cases coming before us, is that the board consider not just those two points that you raised, but there's a third point, that there are some construction projects that take place which are known and a wink is given to it and allowed it to be done, and there's no enforcement. And so that's the point I'm trying to make.
If I may, one last response.
This is the final response, sir.
I'm not sure as to what you're stating as a wink.
Ignoring, ignoring.
I can assure you that the two boards that I sat on, there were no winks. The considerations that we've ever made in regards to anything was to preserving the historic value of the property. And with that said, historic is just that. You're not going to buy a '62 Corvette and take the tires off because of a new tire. You're going to preserve that vehicle. We're trying to preserve these homes.
Right. And I agree, that may not be from the board. It's not a sole act of the board that I'm speaking to.
Okay.
I'm talking about the overall enforcement of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council members, we are now in need of a motion and a second.
Council members, if I can, before you make the motion, to approve the appeal, which is to go with the applicant, you're going to vote yes. To go against the appeal, you're going to say no. So you're not supporting the appeal, you're going to say no. Okay? Because the appeal is to appeal the historic preservation commission. We're not dealing with the historic preservation commission. You're dealing with the appeal.
Okay. So the, so Ms. White, if I want to make sure, a vote for yes is to vote to agree with the applicant?
Yes, sir. To approve the appeal.
To approve, alright.
Yes, sir.
Then, Mr. Mayor, may I have the floor?
You have the floor, sir.
I move that we approve the application of the appeal.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
I'm approving the appeal.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Mayor Glover?
No.
The appeal is denied.
Madam City, Madam.
City Manager, are you prepared to move forward with your agenda, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
You have the floor.
Greetings, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of City Council, Portsmouth family and friends. We have a presentation before you today. Next on the agenda, we will have Mr. John Millswa with Arcadis. He is the city's consultant for resilience, who will be presenting to council a briefing on the development process underway for the Portsmouth Data and Equity Driven Flood Resiliency Strategy Plan. The plan will recommend actions for council, for the city and residents, and what they should take to reduce risk in flooding and increase resilience. The strategy will have an inclusive community engagement, starting with the development of a community vision for a resilient future. Mr. Millswa, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city manager and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to provide an overview of Portsmouth's process of a data and equity-driven flood resilience strategy. My name is John Millswa. I am the project manager for this project with Arcadis. I'm also joined by my colleague Travis Davis. I'd like to first provide an overview of the project. In providing an overview of the project, I do want to put this project in a little larger realm of what resilience is. Using the definition from the Rockefeller Foundation, it is the capacity of individuals, communities and systems to survive, adapt and grow in the faces of stresses and shocks, and even transform when conditions require it. From working with the city thus far, I believe the city has much to be proud of in when it comes to resilience. It's people historically to the present. I also believe Portsmouth is committed to establish strong roots of resilience to be even stronger and more resilient into the future. This visual of a tree shows some examples, characteristics of what a future resilient Portsmouth look like, such as a community with affordable housing, a diversified economy and adapted infrastructure able to hold up to a changing climate. While in a broader evolving vision of resilient Portsmouth informs our process, this project is focused on flooding, which is one root among many that will provide a good foundation for projects to be prioritized and implemented, leading to a more resilient Portsmouth into the future. As mentioned, this project is focused on flooding. It's also a state-funded project. It was put forward in a proposal about a year ago through the state's Department of Conservation and Recreation as part of their Community Flood Preparedness Fund. And the project was awarded grant funding to implement it. A few of the key principles of this program is planning using the best available science, acknowledging climate change and its consequences, as well as enhancing equity through adaptation and protection efforts. These principles are baked into our project approach. Good data and involvement of the community are critical to inform decisions moving forward. So what will be included in the flood strategy? Shaped by inclusive engagement with the community and its key stakeholders, the plan will include a suite of recommendations for specific projects to improve the resilience of essential systems and services, protect vulnerable communities and develop policy and governance tools necessary to implement the plan. The action plan will not only include long-term, but also near-term solutions, planning on our feet for no re-grant measures, but also long-term, larger-scale efforts as part of adaptation over time. What you see before you is the project schedule with those tasks laid out, community engagement throughout the process. Building on the data collection phase, the first part of the phase, we are now working on the risk and vulnerability assessment portion of the project. This portion will lead into the next stage where a suite of tools and solutions will be evaluated with the community to adapt and address the flood risks, leading to an action plan comprising of both near and long-term options, with prioritized cost beneficial projects as well as policies and initiatives and identification of potential funding avenues to implement these measures. The final results will be shared and finalized in the form of a story map. It's helpful to visualize and see where things are going, and a final report to guide the city moving forward. As discussed, the project shaped by inclusive community engagement throughout, we are using waves throughout our project to allow our team, the work and project findings to have a dialogue with key stakeholders and the community to inform each step. In wave one, we aim to hear generally what priorities are and what resilience looks like from the community to inform the risk assessment and toolkit development. In wave two, we are seeking to better understand what's important and why for the city, chiefly clarifying places and services. In wave three, we will be seeking feedback on the how. How do we protect? How do we mitigate? How do we adapt? In wave four, we will be determining how do we implement these changes? How do we make solutions identified in the previous wave actionable? In the fifth and final wave, the decided next steps will be worked out. Who is going to be doing what and the details around it? This wave essentially sets us up for implementation to be successful. We've performed wave one so far at the very beginning of this project. I want to update you a little bit on what occurred there. In wave one, we aim to get feedback on general flood priorities and resilience vision from the community. As part of wave one, based on feedback from the project steering committee, we focus on getting out into the public at established events. We got to have conversations with people and hear feedback on questions, on what were their concerns, what's important, what's a priority. Some of the things we heard were flood issues such as those experienced on Frederick Boulevard, Effingham Street, Victory Boulevard. We also heard priorities such as a desire to protect areas such as Simondsdale, downtown, the shipyard, Effingham Street, Portsmouth Boulevard, and that our process should prioritize social, cultural resilience, improvement to the drainage system, and that green infrastructure should be included where it can be. We also heard that homes are priority for folks. And they also are concerned about getting to their workplaces and returning back to their homes safely. We also heard that it's nerve-wracking for folks as they think about sea level rise and climate change. And even when folks have sought to protect their finances through flood insurance, they found it hard to sometimes navigate that or even obtain it. So we're taking this initial feedback, we're pairing it with risk assessment, flood data, flood modeling, city infrastructure data, and providing a larger understanding of what the risk profile for the city is, where there's hotspots, where priorities are starting to be seen. Along with engagement out in these events, we have an online questionnaire through a website. Some of the themes that we're hearing back from these responses are a bit similar to what we're hearing and talking to people, that people care about areas such as downtown, their homes and the flooding risks that are associated with these areas. They also find that drainage needs to be improved. And while these improvements are being made, they want to be better informed and understand what their risks are and what they can do about it. We also received feedback that many community members have become used to flooding and have learned where to not go during areas and times where it's flooding hard. And they've been inconvenienced in how to get home and how to get back after work. So through this wave, we've been primarily working to get the word out as broad as possible. We've been using technology where we can to have a website, social media to spread the word, have a questionnaire to have feedback along with getting onto the community and using established city networks. And we want to incorporate the priorities that were being heard, the parts of the city that are important to the community, rather than just having a top-down approach. So as I mentioned, there's a project website with a questionnaire. We're hoping that this helps get that word out even further. So where do we head from here, the future waves of engagement? We are now entering wave two of the five engagement waves. In wave two, we will continue to generate broad awareness of the planning process and share information. We will generate a shared understanding of the risks and vulnerabilities. We will generate shared understanding of the toolkit, those solutions that are options for moving forward. We will work with the community to develop evaluation criteria, the recommendations that could be used for success. And last, we will ensure the community knows how to stay informed and involved throughout the project's process. So in this next wave, we will be seeking feedback to better understand the city's flood issues and to better understand what matters most to Portsmouth and how the city operates. So we ask for you all and those that may be watching online to stay up to date with the project. Please let your voice be heard. Help the voice of those that may have it difficult to access technology or come to events and visit the website. There's a questionnaire there. We'll continue to update that website as the project continues with more information and additional questionnaires and ways to provide feedback. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? Not seeing any. I do have a couple of questions. I know that currently in some of our older neighborhoods, for example Ebony Heights, we're doing some infrastructure things out there. But when I see the list of the communities that you've talked to, like Victory Boulevard and the shipyard and those areas, Old Town, certainly those are areas in Portsmouth that flood and that are very vulnerable to sea level rise. But some of our traditional neighborhoods, like Ebony Heights, have you talked to folks in some of those neighborhoods as well? Or do you plan to?
Yes. It's a great question. We definitely don't, I guess, we haven't tracked exactly where everyone's voice is coming from. So I can't say if someone from Ebony Heights or certain neighborhoods have provided feedback. Some of the information we're getting does shine a light on where people visit, what they've experienced. And we are trying to make sure that every corner of the community is heard. And we're not, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, excuse me. So we are also working on the citywide stormwater model to identify different areas where we are experiencing flooding from various levels of rain intensity. From there, you know, we are also working with some of the civic leagues and communities. And we'll be pairing that information together where we can compare what our stormwater model is identifying and then also try and reach out to those communities and make sure that we try and get their feedback.
And excuse me, I have a question for the city manager. So Madam Manager, some of those communities that may be more vulnerable, that have experienced flooding perhaps, could we get a list of some of those and maybe talk to some of the civic league presidents and just make sure that we're doing a comprehensive look and we have everybody at the table? I think while we're doing this, it's critically important that we get everybody in the room that is affected or potentially could be affected.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, we will take care of that.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. A number of years ago, there was a flood study done. Have you all referenced that or have you seen it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've been, we've built on all the data-to-date, past studies, recommendations and are building onto that with additional modeling, current projections for future as well, and using all that moving forward.
So I'm a little unclear how you, you mentioned civic leagues. You've visited some civic leagues?
We've been reaching out to understand how we can best get the word out through civic leagues.
Well, I'm unclear, how are you getting the word out? I still don't completely understand that.
Yeah, we, through email.
Not everybody has email.
Correct, yes. So that's been our initial means to try to present in city council or at civic league meetings. And then we do understand that there is limitations to technology of how much we can get the word out through that. That's our starting point.
Yeah. So we're at the starting point, reaching out to the civic leagues to identify how we can get to those meetings and start talking with folks and understand. we can get to those meetings and start talking with folks and understand what's going on.
And even with civic leagues, they don't represent the whole community that they're in. I would suggest a series of charrettes, community meetings, something like that, if you, you know, if you want to get input from a good cross-section of the city, because like the mayor, first thing I looked for on there was Ebony Heights, and I didn't see that, and made me wonder what, you know, exactly where you're getting the input.
Yeah, the couple of events that we participated in, we went to Sunset Thursdays, National Night Out, and started to see a cross-representation of different people, understand that not everyone attends those events. That was one starting spot, and yeah, certainly looking at civic leagues, hopefully to get representation across the city as we move forward.
Are you contemplating doing a series of community meetings?
Yes, we're working with the steering committee, dynamic process here to decide as each step, what's the best route to be widespread and get maximum engagement and best return from folks in the community.
Okay. I guess my question is to the city manager is, are there plans to host community meetings, a series of charrettes, so we can get input? And these gentlemen, I think they need more input.
Deputy City Manager Baldwin, can you chime in?
Certainly. Yes, thank you, Mayor Glover, Councilman Moody, members of council. Yes, this is part of the process in determining other avenues for the consultants working with city staff to identify other means to collect information throughout the community. So this information providing tonight, wanting to have more community meetings and certainly be incorporated into the process, would not be a problem.
Yeah, I think that would be good, because like I said before, not everybody has email, and even if they do, they're apt to miss it. I think we need to get the word out far and wide that, because I know darn well flooding's a lot more prevalent than what is listed here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the experts say that the sea level is rising, and it's rising at a fast pace on this coast, and we know that with a flash flood, these areas give us problems, how do we include all the data, data such as with hurricanes, one, two, three, four, and five have different effects? So how effective can we be and are we going to be including all the data? We seem to be acting from an axis of this is how it is and this is what we're planning from, but things are constantly changing. So how do we meet the challenge adding the futuristic of the changes? Are we bumping our head against the wall here? Are we dreaming for something that we can only minimize and live with the outcome and the expectations of what we're doing? Is it prudent? Are there pumps that can meet these challenges? These are all the parameters that are involved here. So I think it's kind of unfair for us to think that we can make a lot of difference. You see what I'm saying? We can do some things, but nature, will nature have its way and we're just fooling ourselves? Or are we putting a Band-Aid on for a year or two? What are we doing here? You see what I'm saying?
You raise a great point. The way that we look at flooding risks, similar to kind of other risks, is look at a spectrum, at least what the current data and science can tell us in terms of probabilities, and look at that range. And we can also look back and compare some of that to historical, you know, events and compare that to have validity towards it. Obviously, as you look forward, some of those projections can change. We've seen other communities start to adapt and make progress. I would say that it's also prudent to be adaptable, to not just plan for one scenario, but to plan for solutions that can be adapted over time. So that's in part of the suite of options that we usually work through is, you know, it often can be very challenging to say, let's provide a solution for 100 years out from now, but if we do incremental progress and work, but still leave our options open as more information becomes available and more things become certain, that allows for things to be dynamic in that process while still having a good target where we're headed.
And so I think a big aspect of it also is that this is part of our resiliency program in which we commend the city of Portsmouth for taking on this endeavor, identifying what we agree to be an acceptable amount of risk and then planning towards that. Resiliency is how quickly you can bounce back from those types of events, and so we want to try and limit that timeframe. We don't need flooding to cripple the city. We need to be able to come back in a quick manner in which we can get everybody back functioning in a proper way. So that's what we're trying to identify, is using the science to say, okay, these are the areas that are the focus, and in doing so, we need to try and protect them to this level of risk so that we can get everybody going as close to that normal day as we can.
So the most prudent outcome is to let us know what we're doing and the level of risk, the maximum and minimum level of risk for the outcome of the efforts we put forth.
Yeah, there's trade-offs with everything, and so that will be part of the back and forth of, and there's a lot of terminology of such, like living with water has come out of things like Katrina and solutions in New Orleans of, it's not just about building a huge barrier, but it's living, figuring out how to live with water and decide what level of risk is tolerable. You know, maybe an inch of water is not a big deal. Emergency vehicles can pass through it, and it doesn't really, you know, affect life. Much of communities have some water in different places, but it's really those trade-offs in deciding where to emphasize and prioritize moving forward. And our process does a cost-benefit analysis to look at some options, so that helps inform the process so that it is wise decision-making going forward.
We have communities now that are having to deal with flooding, and they say that, okay, I changed my commute to work because I know that after a rainstorm, this intersection's going to be flooded. And while that is not ideal, but is that money, that investment, can that be better used somewhere else in the city to make sure that we're allowing more of our residents to be able to get to work, get back home, get to child care throughout the regular basis? Dr. Wood, should you have the floor?
Yes, as I listen and read through your presentation, I'm just curious, when you're looking at cities that have a high level of poverty and in addition to that, persons who are resource-restricted, I'm curious, how does your resilience plan take into account those who prior to the flood are already at significant risk? I don't see anything as far as how this would address those type of populations, considering the economic impact that persons can't just, you referenced Katrina, you know, persons can't just up and move and change their situations. So through this resilience plan that you suggested, what are the economic resources that are being brought to the table to persons who are already significantly at risk prior to flood events?
Sure. So we applied for the Community Flood Preparedness Fund, and that's the driving factor behind, you know, the water aspect of things. We work very closely with the planning department and have taken into account past studies in which we want to look, and we're actually working through expanding this scope to include additional hazards from a societal and economic standpoint also. We know that you can't just focus solely on flood. However, the funding mechanism is focused on flood and rainfall, so that is where a majority of that is. But while we're looking at everything, there's so much additional data that we are looking to build a comprehensive resiliency program.
So persons who are already vulnerable and they live in communities where they can't just uproot and build houses on higher plains, I'm just curious, how does this take into account those type of scenarios? Is that part of it?
Yes.
Because those resources are not here presently.
Correct.
So what is this bringing to the table that when you're saying you're going to be engaging citizens, I mean, citizens don't just want to know the flood is coming or that the impact is going to have, what kind of resources would be available to pull them through? And I'm just curious if you have actually looked at cities that have that type of dynamic and has it actually been dealt with? Because I didn't, I don't really see that being addressed here.
Sure. I mean, yeah, most of the communities that are most affected by flooding, it's disproportionately those that have economic issues and don't have the means to evacuate or to relocate or some of those things. And so that is the familiar process that we're in with most of the cities that we work with. We've worked through from planning all the way through construction of some work just across the water in Norfolk, and we've, that's part of the process here.
So I'm just curious, how do you, how is that addressed?
So some of that recommendations will be both kind of response and helping in terms of helping locate evacuation routes and things that will be responsive in terms of helping community members in response and more on the immediate response side, and then others will be longer-term vision of what the community might look like and working on incremental steps to get there, both from what individuals can do, what communities can do, what policies and initiatives should help kind of that driving momentum. And we're not looking at a one-year, we're looking at a 50-year or so horizon to start to make small changes over time.
Yeah, I'm just curious, and since we know we have Katrina as an example, and a lot of persons lost their private properties, businesses came in and expanded, moved into communities that were once residential, how is it policy-wise that you have seen through your initiatives and things that you've done through these studies? What type of policies have you been recommending to councils to prevent those type of things from happening? Because when you start talking about losing property, that's generational wealth that persons have lost. And so that's what I'm curious, does this address those type of issues when we're talking about vulnerable communities?
Yes, I think I'd like to get back to you maybe on that question. We'll get some other examples that may be directly parallel Portsmouth. We aren't quite there in terms of recommendations on policies, but that is certainly a key component of what the recommendations are, not just capital improvements.
Right.
But policies, things that could help encourage measures moving forward.
Right, because council passes policies, ordinances, and if there are no significant policy recommendations, ordinances that are going to address those type of issues of loss, then really I think we've done a disservice.
Agree, and I commend the city made some zoning ordinances, improvements over time that have really improved addressing flooding, but we do see that that's incremental progress. It's things that have to be looked at holistically and the ripple effects and make sure that there's time to work through things, and that will be part of our work moving forward to include that in our recommendations.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke? Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. You mentioned that you applied for some federal funding. Is that for this whole region? Is it specific to Portsmouth? And what is our end goal? Is that for us to utilize our CIP funding in a different way or the funding that we have allocated to mitigate any of the flooding issues? Is that funding for us to use or is it for you to implement the plan? And I see that it started April last year, and it's going to be done by fall of next year, so just one year, and then we're on our own? What happens after that?
Great question. So this specific project is funded through the Community Flood Preparedness Fund, actually a 90/10 match, 90% is received from the state for that. There are other grants that we've worked with the city to help. One federal one from FEMA is to help implement the Old Town Pump Station project, and so there's continuing to be a wave of opportunities of funding come out. We've been working with the engineering and planning department to identify those that are growing and becoming more robust in the opportunities and align both existing felt needs and understood needs to target those, and then also part of our work in this project will be to look at projects that are recommended and identify potential funding opportunities, whether that's reserving in the CIP or a targeted federal or state fund that could be pursued through grant or loans to help implement that.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor then, Mr. Moody.
Should we visit Vienna?
I'm sorry?
Should we have some folk to visit Vienna?
So, I mean, I'm sorry, we're misunderstanding the question, Vienna.
Well, that's the city that lives on water.
Oh, Venice, Venice, Italy, oh. Well, Arcadis is a Dutch-based company, so water management is intrinsic to what we, our company has built itself on, and we do cross-sharing. We do a lot of collaboration with our team that's in the Netherlands to develop good and best practices. Also, it's, we've also seen lots of communities go visit sister cities and other communities facing similar challenges and seeing, okay, what worked for you, how have you navigated this, and start to develop some of those relationships and best practices.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you for the presentation. As I understand it, even though there are federal grants, state grants available, there's no money currently for the homeowner or property owners to be prepared to be resilient. Is that correct?
There are some opportunities out there that are available to individual residents.
Through this program?
Not through this program.
And the reason why I ask, a few years ago, there were low-interest loans to allow people to raise the height, in some cases, of their buildings, their homes, and we had some people here in Portsmouth that took advantage of that. So that type of funding or that type of loans isn't available in this program?
Not through this, but FEMA does have repetitive loss process to submit for raising homes. That does continue to exist. And one thing that we're also doing, separate project with the city with engineering and planning, is helping identify some homes and improving known risk of what that first-floor elevation is. So we're actually doing kind of a study, a pilot, to see cost-effective ways to try to improve that data, so homeowners know whether it may be viable or cost-effective to do some mitigations at their parcel level. So it may not fund it directly, it would start to inform what might be worth pursuing for homeowners.
So you can direct them in the right direction?
Yes.
And help them?
Correct.
Apply for those funds?
Correct. It would, yeah, guide his citizens where it would be best to look and proceed forward, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Our next presentation will be by our EMS paramedic supervisor, Mr. Tom Sasso, and our community paramedic, Madison Gray, and they will provide an overview of the city's community crisis co-response team.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here, mayor, city council, and city staff. I am here today to present to you our community crisis co-response team, and that's going to be through Portsmouth Fire, Rescue, and EMS. to be through Portsmouth Fire, Rescue, and EMS. Who are we? What is a Community Crisis Co-Response Team? It's a team of integration of Behavioral Health Service, peer recovery, social service, hospital system, other stakeholders, as well as law enforcement and any other community services that might want to collaborate with us. Our mission is an integrated mobile community health team with the focus on a holistic approach to behavioral health, substance addiction, medical and social needs as it relates to anyone's basic quality of life. Um, this is just a brief overview of some of the key areas we'll be discussing. Um, so I will first give, um, my supervisor, Tom Sasso, the floor so he can, um, give a little bit of background and, um, involvement with the program.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, City Council, City Manager, and City Staff. Uh, my name is Tom Sasso, I'm currently the EMS supervisor, or one of the EMS supervisors in operations for EMS and the paramedics within the city of Norfolk. Um, I have a somewhat diverse background. I've worked in many cities, many departments, uh, both as a police officer, firefighter, search and rescue. I've worked, uh, in Norfolk, I've worked here, Surry County, San Diego County in California. Um, so I've seen a lot of different systems, I've seen a lot of different models, and certainly a lot of very diverse communities. Uh, one of the things that attracts me to Portsmouth, it's a beautiful community with beautiful people, but it also has a lot of challenges, so we're able to make more of a difference here. So I will tell you, 20, 25 years ago, when I was on a crisis team in San Diego, um, we did a lot of great things, but really if that crisis team had went away, that community could pretty much sustain itself. That's not this community. This community has a, a vulnerable population, it's a population that's economically challenged, it's a beautiful culture, a beautiful population, and a lot of challenges. So unfortunately, we don't always have all the resources. So this team, while we can't fix all the problems that we all know currently exist, we can address some of those and bring a lot of the resources that we do have together and address those. So the, the theme of the rest of this presentation will be, it's a holistic approach. So if we come across someone, a, a vulnerable population or an individual with, say, substance abuse, we don't approach it as someone with just substance abuse. We approach it as a person with maybe homelessness, economic challenges, uh, mental health issues, all kinds of things, we're trying to bring all that together to one. So with that, I'll turn it over to my partner.
Thank you. Um, again, my name is Madison Gray. Um, I've been a paramedic with the city of Portsmouth for about three years now, um, and I've getting ready to finish my masters and I focusing on community development. Um, so here is just a visual representation of our team dynamics and breakdown. Um, so you can see Portsmouth Fire, Rescue, Emergency Services, um, in collaboration with Portsmouth Behavioral Health Service, Social Services, law enforcement, and any other co-collaborator that might be interested. And together we form our, um, three CRT, as we like to call it in short. And we've broken that down into two separate teams or entities. So you have the CRT I, so that's going to be our crisis response team. And then our CRT II is our community response team. I will go into details a little bit more later on those two separate teams for you. So, um, first off, the first thing we did as we started working on this was our data collection, um, focusing on, uh, inter-department surveys, service calls, and overdoses, just trying to figure out what vulnerable populations we needed to focus on. So one of the first things we did here was a generalized survey released to all fire department staff. We got 73 responses in about four weeks and asking very generalized questions. Um, for instance, stuff like, do they feel like they're going to the same address often? Are they returning to the address in 12 hours? Are they calling adult protective services a little too frequently? Um, is it, they're arriving on scene and they wish they had more resources, they wish they had more education, or they felt like when they arrived on scene, it was not a fire or EMS matter? Um, so we collected that, and at the end of the survey, it was an open question, so if anybody wanted to, um, give the team what they, they think that their, um, team might need, um, what they feel that could, areas that we might need to focus on as they are still, as their first line staff, or maybe they've been in Portsmouth for an extended period of time, and they might be able to provide some insight for that team. Um, the second data collected is our incident data, so this is a general incident data, um, for the entire fire department. So you have five years and then this year. Um, so the blue is going to be your, um, medical calls secondary to service calls. Um, so service calls encompasses our, um, patients that call for falls or lift assists, um, so that's within the service calls. And then you have the good intent calls and the fire calls. Um, so our medical calls and our service calls are just continuing to rise over the years. And then you look at our overdose data, and so again, that's five years as well as, um, this year. So you can see the huge jump in overdoses. Um, we went from 185 in 2017 and now we're up to 618 of this year alone. Um, and then you also, um, have our cardiac arrests deaths as well with that data. Um, so it is a true need for some sort of, um, addiction recovery help for the city. Um, and then this is the breakdown for just this year, and in September, we had our record high at 100 overdoses in that 30-day period. So that is a significant amount of overdoses for the city. I did go ahead and map that data for you, about 500 of it, um, just so we can kind of see where those vulnerable, um, neighborhoods are, where we're seeing the overdoses happen more frequently. Um, should we just want to get that kind of visual, um, look at, um, throughout the city? So essentially, we're establishing a fourth response. You call 911, you get fire, EMS, or PD. This is a fourth option, um, a different, um, way, or as he said before, holistic approach to handling, um, citizens who might not need to go to the ER for everything, there might be something else that we can do for them. So our crisis response team, um, so this is going to be a CIT-trained paramedic, that's a crisis intervention, um, training. Um, so they have a little bit more, um, extra training compared to a normal provider who might be on scene, and it's specifically handling our mental health, our mental health population. And this team is going to be in collaboration with the Department of Behavioral Health Services. And essentially, the plan is to have a paramedic and a licensed clinician responding to calls over, um, police, EMS, or, um, the fire department. So this team is very specialized, they know how to handle this kind of demographic, and it's, um, overall better for the citizen who's calling in need of help. Um, this team is in still very, very early stages of development, but it is something we do want to, um, push for. Every seven hours, someone in Virginia does die by suicide. Um, our mental health population is just growing, especially after the COVID pandemic. Um, so it is essential to have this direct in, um, treatment for these patients. Our secondary team is that community response team. So this is going to basically handle anything else that might not fall into the mental health side. Um, so this team will focus on resource utilization, follow-up referrals, um, high users, so these are people who might be calling 911 really frequently compared to, um, the average person, as well as working with social services to handle our, um, adult protective service and, um, child protective service cases. Um, this team can do, um, anything. Um, they can establish a care plan, they can help with medications, um, they can help with, um, home health, um, movement to higher care facilities, transportation, housing conditions, anything outside the realm of an emergency, they need to go to the ER. This is what this team is going to be dedicated for, focusing on that multi-sectoral approach. Um, so this right now is our current referral process and criteria, so this is a, um, a form that the fire department personnel have access to. They can fill it out and send it directly to the community response team, and that's when we start doing our follow-ups, um, you know, and figuring out what this person might need. Um, this is just, um, some of the criteria, it can expand past that, um, if it needs to. And then eventually, this will expand to a digital, um, version as well. Um, so looking at our high utilizers, um, every week, um, I sit on the leadership team over at Maryview Emergency Department, and, um, part of the segment of that is focusing on our high users. Oftentimes, we have the same high users. We're going to the house multiple times, we're bringing them to the ER multiple times. Um, so we want to better collaborate to decrease that use of 911, um, decrease the visits to the emergency room, and improve their overall quality of life and not having to consistently go to the ER. Um, this graph here is just an example of some of the high utilizers we are, um, following. Um, so Patient D has called 48 times this year. Um, and we have a couple sitting at 33, a couple of 20s, so this is a high use of the system, and it's not improving their quality of life if they're consistently going to the ER or calling us. And ultimately, we are creating a force multiplier. We're decreasing the calls to police, fire, and EMS, but in turn, increasing their response. They can go, they're not, their workloads decrease, but at the same time, they can respond better to the calls that they need to be at.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Gray, I just, on the high utilizers, are you finding that, uh, these are, are persons who have health insurance, do not have health insurance?
They usually do have health insurance, um, but a lot of it also stems from, do they understand their own health? You know, do they go to their follow-ups? Are they going to their physician? Um, are they getting the right home health in their, uh, you know, in their home? It just kind of depends.
So we, there are programs for people who don't have health insurance, and it's almost advantageous if they don't, because we actually have access to other doctors. The issue isn't so much if they have health insurance, the issue is when you look at the cost, even with health insurance, if a copay is $50 and I don't have $50, it might as well be a million. So what winds up happening for someone who is just that economically challenged, if they have a chronic condition, they can't afford a taxi to go to the hospital, so they call the ambulance. Cause at the end of the day, an $800 ambulance bill that you don't pay is still cheaper than a $30 taxi bill that you have to pay on the spot. Going to the ER is still cheaper if you're not paying it than it would be to go to a regular doctor and have to pay a copay. So unfortunately, for many of these, we're their only option. E- even with healthcare insurance, they just can't afford, afford that. So part of the issue is traditionally EMS, we come in, we address the emergency. If you're a population like San Diego and you work in biotech and you have a heart attack, I give you nitroglycerin, you're on your way, everything else is covered. Here, that's not the case. Here, if you have a chronic condition, you can't afford to go to a regular doctor or specialist, you call us. That's traditionally not something we address. So by having a holistic approach where we can, we connect with the other doctors of the communities, we do find if they don't have health insurance, we can bring them to, um, Bonsor Corps, uh, Free Medical, things like that, where we can bring more resources in.
I am just curious, though, of the, um, the high utilizers, repeat, do you have, um, percentages of what, uh, this population represents as far as insured and not insured? And, and the, the point you raise is excellent as far as if you don't have the funds, you may as well, um, not be insured as well. So, do, any, any data on, on that?
Not currently. We can, we can try to look that up, so we do have access to all that.
Okay.
Anecdotally, I will tell you, most of them have insurance.
Yeah, I, I would say the majority of persons we come across do have insurance.
Okay.
I, I will follow up.
I think the biggest issue is whether it's the, the, um, economic status, um, I also, I think, feel like a huge issue is also just the education and not being proactive in their, their own health and care, because it's almost a little bit easier to just go to the ER. Um, and then, um, within the community response team, we really wanted to have, um, a dedicated team to focus on our opioid crisis. Um, so this is our outreach and addiction recovery support team, so this is a community paramedic and a peer support specialist. The peer support specialist also comes from the Department of Behavioral Health Services, so we already have, um, that partnership with them. And, um, a peer support specialist is somebody with lived experience, um, so they have a lot, um, better way to communicate with somebody, way more so than I can. Um, so we go out twice a week, um, door-to-door, and we hand out lifesaving Narcan, we ensure they know how to use it. Um, we pull our overdose data, um, for that three or four-day period, and we run the addresses, um, we check to see if they're accurate addresses, and we just go door-to-door, however long it takes, and just try to reach as many people as we can, providing them resources, the Narcan, um, if they want to get to a facility, we can help them through those steps. I mean, anything that we can do if they do choose, um, the recovery path. And we, and even if a person is showing up every week on the list or twice a week, we go every single time, we do not skip the house, no matter how often they show up on the list. Um, this is just an image of some of the, um, items that the peer support will bring, um, resources, the Narcan, um, any goodies that they might come across, anything that they might bring, um, we will pass that out to these, um, users.
And again, I'll point out, anecdotally, um, the Narcan that we pass out visually looks different than the Narcan we carry, so it's pretty easy to see when, when we've seen it on the street, when someone's using it. And we are seeing quite a bit of, of use of that Narcan. So that is actively saving lives, we know that, there's, there's no question.
And then, um, I've been in this position, um, full-time, um, since July, um, so this is the last four months of those bi-weekly visits. Um, I've actually been doing the outreach in addiction since last year, but it was very, um, sporadic because I was still on the ambulance, so it was harder to fulfill that every week. Um, but now that I'm in the office full-time, so this is data, um, I've broken it down to who we've made contact with, with the Narcan given, um, if we left info at the door, if we spoke with the family, or if we just were unable to locate them. So as I mentioned earlier, in September, we had the highest, um, overdose rate at 100. That's also my highest, um, contacts to date at 21. So we gave out 21 lifesaving Narcan in September. Um, so we have attended, last year, we attended some recovery events as we have partnered with Behavioral Health Services. Um, here's just a few images for you, um, just to show us out in the community and making connections. We've made connections with Safe Harbor, um, Dare, uh, we work with the fire department's Community Risk Reduction Division as well. And then these are the ones this year, so they had another recovery event this year, and then we had our Portsmouth Fire Community Day. There's a little, um, collaboration photos there for you. Um, we also, um, didn't want to forget other vulnerable populations, um, so we actually, um, recently have been in contact with Portsmouth Aging Task Force as well as Portsmouth Senior Station. Um, they invited us, um, to their annual event, and so, um, we decided we wanted a separate team to focus more on that senior population, so anyone above the age of 65, and we ultimately want to improve their overall quality of life and ensure they have a continued well-healthy life. Um, so we want to ensure that they have good home resources, promoting independence, um, any sort of fall prevention and management, um, fire safety and education, we can do home checks and home safety surveys, and that could be anything from telling you what type of rugs might be more likely to make you fall compared to something else, I mean, anything that we can do to improve this population and prevent unnecessary, um, injuries. Um, one of the other things that Senior Station has asked us as well is maybe, um, start working on like a monthly health and wellness day that we can bring once a month to the Senior Station, um, and just to provide some extra knowledge and resource for that, um, demographic as well. Um, one of the other things we try to promote is the file of life, um, with this population. Um, if you're not familiar with the file of life, um, it's this little, small red packet, and inside of it, you can fill in all sorts of information, your demographics, medical history, medications, and you put that on your fridge, and it comes with a little sticker, and you put it on your door. So when fire department or EMS show up, they see that sticker on your door and they know to go look for this. Um, we also didn't want to forget about a other vulnerable population of, um, the homeless, um, the homeless, uh, homeless population. Um, so I want to ensure with that community vehicle that it's recognizable, it's going to be very mobile, you're going to see it driving down the street all the time and recognize that this is the community vehicle, please stop it and ask for something if, and if we can hopefully provide it. So we do want to keep some form of, um, kits that we can give out to that demographic as well. Um, I've been in contact with Portsmouth, um, Supportive Housing and the Portsmouth Case Management, so we can kind of keep collaborating and working together as well. Here's a list of some of the stakeholders that we have direct collaboration with, and it varies, it's the, the different Portsmouth departments, um, the case management, all of the, um, recovery centers, um, mental health, um, the LGBTQ Life Center, and the senior, um, stations. Some of our long-term goals here, we want to establish a full, well-integrated health team. Eventually, we do want to make that, um, crisis team 24/7 and can respond to all mental health calls. We want to provide prompt and quality care to the residents of Portsmouth, um, trying to provide an alternative option than just an ER visit, cut back on arrests during non-violent mental health calls, provide more care, resources, and education to ensure citizens of Portsmouth are proactive in their role and their health, as well as targeting Portsmouth opioid crisis and reduced narcotic deaths. We want to use a combined force to deliver a united front in all aspects of one's health. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Sasso, Ms. Gray, for, uh, the presentation. Uh, exactly about how many of these crisis teams are we planning on having in the city?
Um, currently, um, it's just, uh, currently it's me and Currently, it's just, currently, it's me and Sasso working on it. So we're, our primary team right now is that community team. It will start with one crisis team, because I mean, that's already two separate vehicles. But eventually, if it's to expand to twenty-four-seven coverage, just like fire, EMS, it's going to have to be quite a few.
Our initial plan right now is to have one supervisor, one primary coordinator, and then supplement with other paramedics. So what I'm in the process of doing right now is I'm sending my paramedics through CIT training, getting that additional training. So when they come in, just the way our schedule works, they generally have about four hours per week for extra duty, they can come in, do that ride time, things like that. So that helps supplement the team as well.
How, how is this being coordinated with the police department? Because, you know, we're seeing nationwide where persons are having mental crisis, and you have police intervention, and what should have been a mental issue becomes a criminal death issue. And so how is that being coordinated with our police department? Who makes the call on a scene like that when we start implementing this type of crisis team response?
So part of the CRT right now is, is the full team. We work, or we sit on the board with Behavioral Health, Social Services, and the police department has represented well. Most of that aspect that you're referring to, I would direct to Behavioral Health, Director of Behavioral Health, as you, and they sit on that too. And so we sit in on that meeting, but he, he does most of that coordination stuff.
And then I, I do know all the police officers are going to need CIT training as, as well.
So, so I'm, I'm just curious, so when it comes to those situations where there is this probably a mental crisis, but also there's some type of danger element in place, who, who bakes the call as to which one takes priority?
I can answer that. So, so right now, so the way that our dispatching system, it works, it's, it kind of puts it as in like levels. So if somebody has a behavioral health, they're not injuring themselves, they're low risk, usually they just send police. If it's, they're having thoughts, not injuring themselves, low risk, they'll send EMS and engine. But this team is going to supplement that. So instead of the EMS and/or the, and the engine going, it's that response vehicle with law enforcement as backup. But we, we want to just have the CIT-trained paramedic and the licensed clinician primarily the only key interactors with those low-risk ones. Anyone that might be higher or having an emergency or potentially having a life threat, that's going to get the normal response, like anything else. But that crisis team can still go and provide backup, or if something changes, and that crisis team can take over and clear the other vehicles.
I don't know if Mr. Woodard wants to speak on it, but the actual role of the police officer on that team is still in the works, so we haven't figured out all the logistics. We know what the dispatch model looks like from the state, we just don't know how we're going to implement it here with, with staff.
Mr. Whitaker, sir, did you want to add a few?
Yes, sir. In addition to that team, currently, if that person was to need assistance, we do have staff that's on board twenty-four-seven, seven days a week, wherein which they will receive a crisis assessment at that time. That crisis assessment can happen at the hospital or in another secure place. At that time, a licensed staff will evaluate them to determine if they are to, need to go to the hospital, or if we have other services on an outpatient level that can assist them, like case management services, therapy, so forth and so on.
I think my, my question was more in line with what you're seeing happening, where you have some mental breakdown that's occurring right on the scene, before hospitalization, and you have the crisis team and the police are both involved, which, which one takes priority as we start implementing the crisis team approach?
And that, that pretty much falls in the dispatch model. So that, that dispatch model will either be just a paramedic with a licensed clinician, maybe a paramedic, or a community team with an actual EMS response, kind of police response. Certainly, if it comes out with someone who's has a weapon, they're starting to go, there's police respond. If it's just simply they call, they're depressed, they're contemplating, who are the ones who will respond?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sasso, Ms. Gray, and Mr. Whitaker. We appreciate the work you guys are doing out there in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
Madam City Manager?
Thank you all for the presentation. Counsel, I have a few updates on a couple of items that we discussed last month. First, I would like to provide an update on the utilities process. As mentioned last month, there's a moratorium placed on cutoffs for utilities until November the first. As for residential accounts, starting November the first, the Department of Public Utilities will begin a phased approach to address delinquent residential accounts. They will begin with the notification through door hangers, automated bill messages, and bill inserts. Once residents receive the door hanger, they will then have up to thirty days to pay the delinquent account or set up a payment plan with Public Utilities. Previously, residents were only provided three days until disconnection. If residents are not responsive, disconnections will resume December the first. Disconnections will resume by route based on days past due. A press release with that information will be provided. There are grant programs available to assist residents with their utilities. Utility customers experiencing a financial hardship and require assistance with paying their delinquent utility bills can call the Department of Public Utilities for assistance at seven-five-seven-three-nine-three-eight-five-two-four. And as for our commercial delinquent accounts, there are approximately three hundred and seventy, seventy-five, three hundred and seventy-five out of eighteen hundred accounts that are more than thirty-one days delinquent. We are currently placing door hangers and sending out letters to the top twenty-five based on the highest balances. We will also offer payments, a payment plan option for a ten-month period for commercial accounts. The city will resume cutoffs for commercial accounts on November the first. We are also pursuing a contract with a third-party collection agency to collect on those accounts. Any questions?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
I was just curious, as far as for the residential accounts, it's a thirty-day period, and for commercials, it's ten months?
No, the thirty days is, in the past, once they received residential accounts, once they received door hangers, disconnection used to happen within three days.
Okay.
Now we're giving them up to thirty days to either set up a payment plan, there's no time limit on that payment plan.
Okay.
Or to pay the delinquent account.
Okay.
There was a ten-month period set for commercial, to pay off their balances.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
How does the assistance work? What relief is it giving?
There are grants available to assist individuals, but they need to call Public Utilities, and they'll walk them through the process, sir.
Is it available for all of them?
Can you elaborate? We'll follow back up with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, yes, ma'am.
Okay, the next follow-up would be an update on the ARPA allocation. A list was provided to you on a report faxed to council, and the list details all categories that were identified by staff. It appears that council adopted an ordinance to appropriate the money to the grants fund in two thousand and twenty-one. However, council never approved the ARPA categories for the first round of funding. An ordinance approving categories of expenditures for second, the second round of ARPA funds was adopted by council on September the twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-two, and they appropriate, appropriating twenty-eight million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-two to the grants fund. As of September, excuse me, October the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, we have spent eighteen million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seven, eighteen million dollars of ARPA funding. The amount not encumbered as of yet is thirty-eight point three million. I do not, I do have a list of individuals, businesses, and/or organizations who were recipients of ARPA funding between October the twenty-first and July the twenty-second. If any member of council would like to view it, I do have the list. And just an update on Rock the Block, we initially had a community walk scheduled in Craddock for November the twelfth, but that date has to be changed because it is a holiday weekend. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentations and announcements for this evening, and if you would like, I will proceed with the CMRs.
Please proceed, ma'am.
First CMR, twenty-two dash three eighteen, adoption of an ordinance accepting settlement funds in an amount of eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents from the National Opioid Settlement Fund Trust, and it is to go towards the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation MOU. Twenty-two dash three nineteen, adoption of an ordinance accepting thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars of home investment partnership program income, and it is to go towards the two thousand and twenty-three Community Planning and Development Program Fund. Twenty-two dash three twenty, adoption of an ordinance accepting aid to local, localities, funding in an amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-five from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, going to the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services. And twenty-two dash three twenty-one, adoption of a resolution authorizing the conveyance of twenty-four-ten, twenty-four-fourteen, and twenty-four-sixteen, Turnpike Road, to the Economic Development Authority. That concludes my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any reports from our council liaisons? Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the PPIC meeting this morning, along with the city manager and Attorney Miller as well. VIG, Virginia International Gateway, gave a presentation that speaks well of the port and the activity there. They mentioned, they've had seven straight months of over three hundred thousand TEUs, which is incredible. They also mentioned they're, they're tracking double-digit increases in the port activity. I think their last figure was ten percent. And they also gave an update on the dredging that's scheduled to be completed in two thousand and twenty-five. And what that dredging will accomplish is it will allow two-way traffic in and out of the harbor, which will mean that our port will be the only port on the East Coast that has that capability. So obviously, things are doing very well over at VIG, but that's, that's got it.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further council liaison reports, that concludes our public work session. We will reconvene our regular council meeting at seven PM.